And today, as we gather this council meeting, our hearts continue to weigh heavy with sorrow and our thoughts continue to be for those who are affected by the events that took place at Wiley Elementary on April 22nd. Before we proceed with this agenda, let us observe a moment of silence reflecting on the lives that have been taken from us too soon and the effects that it has had on our community. As we emerge from this moment of reflection, let us remember that we're not alone in our grief. Our community stands together, united in support and solidarity. In times of darkness, it's our unity that becomes the beacon of hope. As we navigate through the aftermath of the events that happened at Wiley Elementary, our city stands at crossroads where our resilience and compassion must shine brightest. We've been shaken to the core. Our hearts heavy with grief, but let us remember that strength lies in togetherness. Each of us carries a piece of the healing puzzle. And it's through our collective efforts that we will piece it together. Let us extend our hands to those who are hurting, offer solace and support without judgment or reservation. Let us listen to one another's stories, embrace the diversity of our experiences as threads that we weave the fabric of our community tighter. In the face of adversity, let kindness be our default. Empathy, our guiding principle. Let us honor the memories of those we have lost by fostering a culture of understanding, love, solidarity. Together we heal. Together we rebuild. Together we are stronger. I want to extend my deepest gratitude to our law enforcement officers and emergency responders who worked tirelessly during the wake of this tragedy. Their dedication, bravery, and unwavering commitment to protecting and serving our community are a beacon of hope in these dark times. We are profoundly grateful for their selfless service and sacrifice. I want to thank all of you for being here today and for your unwavering dedication to our community. Together we will rise above the darkness guided by the light of hope and resilience. I thank you all for being here this evening. I now must exit this council meeting to attend my duties as the Chair of Energy Communities Alliance at the New Nuclear Forum. But it was important for me to be here tonight to speak these words. Mayor Pro Tem Brink, will you please lead in tonight's meeting in my absence?
Sure. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for those words of comfort. I will now call the meeting to order. It is 6:03 PM. Before we get started, I'll ask Stephanie to read the hybrid meeting ground rules and then call roll.
All right, thank you. Tonight's meeting will be held in person with a virtual meeting component. If you are participating virtually, please make sure the name shown at the bottom of your video view is the name you would like the Mayor Pro Tem to use. You can change this by right-clicking on the three dots in the upper corner of your video view and clicking Rename. Audience members present in the council chambers will be called upon first during public comment periods. Those participating remotely should virtually raise your hand if you wish to speak. To virtually raise your hand, click on Participants and then click on Raise Hand. If you are participating by phone only, press asterisk nine to raise your hand. Please limit all comments to three minutes. All right, roll call. Richard Bloom?
Here.
Fred Brink?
Here.
David Fettow?
Here.
John Smart?
Here.
Councilmember Hayes requested to be excused and also Councilmember Stoker was on travel this evening.
Thank you, Stephanie. Council, may I have a motion to exclude, to excuse Councilmembers Hayes and Stoker?
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We'll now go to the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Bloom, would you kindly lead us this evening?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, the agenda is before you. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll start tonight's meeting off with a presentation. I'm pleased to have Ms. Michelle Holt here today from the Benton Franklin Council of Governments, if you would please.
Council, I'm here the first time in two years to give you an update on the Council of Governments. As you know, the council is a voluntary association of the city, county, and district of our region. We were formed to improve communication, multi-jurisdictional decision-making, regional planning, and provide the agency capacity for providing multi-jurisdictional programs. On your behalf, the Council of Governments, they are a council of governments, your regional planning commission with a metropolitan planning organization and transportation management area under federal highways and federal transit, the regional transportation planning organization under WashDOT, and the economic development district under the West Department Commerce Economic Development Administration. So a few highlights that have happened since the last time we were here to see you. Most recently, the adoption of a new interlocal agreement, bylaws and community policies. We appreciate your ratification of those. And while those are not the most interesting projects, they're vitally important to our organization and our ability to serve and govern. So thank you for that. When I reported to the council two years ago, I was seriously concerned about the lack of reserve funds that the council had, that council governments had. At that point, we had $21,000 in reserves.
And that was alarming for me as the executive director. Since that time, we were able to sell a piece of excess real property that allowed us to reimburse our reserve fund and bring that up to $450,000. So a much more comfortable place to be, especially as an organization that has 80% of its funding coming from state and federal funding programs to make sure we have money in place in case it's necessary. We obligated $12.72 million to local transportation projects, secured $600,000 for the EPA Brownfield Assessment Grant Program, under which we've been able to do assessments and planning activities for 12 sites in Benton and Franklin Counties. We received $400,000 in ARPA funding from Benton and Franklin Counties to support resiliency planning and efforts on behalf of the communities. We had one of our revolving loan funds de-federalized by the EDA. What that means is we're no longer obligated to report on those funds back to the federal government and we're allowed to use them for a purpose other than revolving loans, as long as it's for economic development. So those funds have been set aside and future purposes will be determined. We conducted 75 technical assistance services and over 70 modeling and mapping services on behalf of our jurisdictions and facilitated 50 congressional connection meetings where we help our jurisdictions meet with the delegation staff or our federal representatives to work on issues that are important to you. Next slide. So this is what I call my "What Have You Done For Me Lately" slide. For the city of West Richland, we have obligated $3,671,925-ish. We'll call it $25 for transportation funding projects between 2019 and 2023. Roscoe was very successful in his proposals for projects. And of course, Roscoe serves as the Chair of the TAC and Eric is the new Vice Chair for our new Planning Subcommittee. Kate Moran serves as our Vice Chair of the Board, so we're slightly just joking that West Richland is slowly taking over. No, not really, but we appreciate you guys being willing to serve and partner. For economic development, you have multiple projects listed in our Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. You have the opportunity to participate in our congressional connection meetings as well as participate in the Brownfields Program and work with the Broadband Action Team for Benton and Franklin County that we help co-facilitate. For 2023, your dues to the COG were $9,823, which when you look at that over the five-year return on investment, that's $81 in direct return for every dollar that you invest in the COG. So we strive to give more than we receive and we hope that you see that benefit. We have some exciting things coming up for 2024, exciting in the world of planning and, you know, government things. Next slide, please. Hot off the press, last month, our board approved the hiring of a grant navigator position. So what we really heard from our jurisdiction members is that there is so much money available at a state and federal level for programs and staff are really at their capacity to review and assess those programs and oftentimes have to select applying for one program over another just because they don't have time. So this staff position will support not only the identification of potential funding opportunities, but reviewing and working with jurisdiction staff to ensure additional capacity for applying for grant funds. So we're in the process of finalizing that job description now and hope to have that position hired within the next six weeks to two months. The funding we approved was for a 24-month position, a test for us to be able to see if having this position will provide the value that we think it will. And if so, then of course we'll come back to our members to determine how we want to fund that position to go forward long-term. Next slide. In 2024, we are working on our Regional Bicycle Plan. This will be a vision for enhancing bicycling opportunities for the residents. It will include processing mapping of the regional bike network, identifying barriers and strategies, and then to help local jurisdictions apply for funding resources to support biking infrastructure. We're doing our biennial regional traffic count program where we look at 719 locations across the region. Urban counts will be running between March and the end of this month in May, and then rural counts will be in August through October. Next slide. We're conducting a regional system analysis with WashDOT to look at arterial streets and the state highway system, identify where there are current choke points, and look where we can present potential steps to address these service locations. Part of what's driving this activity is concern over the freight traffic that's being driven by the industrial growth, especially on the Franklin County side of the river, but also in Richland with the Horn Rapids industrial area as well. So we're hoping that this will be the first step to bring WashDOT on as a partner to do the current state analysis of the system to allow us to then look at what, how can we invest into further planning and study to work on what we perceive is going to be a significant issue with freight traffic. Next slide. We are happy that we received a $320,000 Safe Streets and Roads for All grant this year. This program will allow our staff to improve mobility and the safety for children to walk, bike, and roll to school. The COG is working with the school districts as well as the jurisdictions to develop safe routes for all schools in Benton and Franklin County. So every school in every school district in the two counties will receive a specifically designed map with the safest transportation routes around the school to help their students, as well as encouraging additional active transportation and visioning for goals and actions to help implement. The second phase of that grant also includes a regional comprehensive safety action plan, that's a mouthful, to assess the current conditions and develop a well-defined strategy to prevent roadway fatalities and serious injuries in the region. Next slide. As I mentioned before, BF COG is co-facilitating, facilitating the Broadband Action Team for Benton and Franklin Counties. There are two subcommittees with that organization. Infrastructure, looking at the broadband equity and accessibility deployment funding that should be coming from the state, and then digital equity to look at those barriers that are keeping parts of our society from having access equitably to internet and... Yep. To the internet. Let's start there. BF COG has partnered with the Tri-Cities Regional Chamber of Commerce, TRIDEC, and Visit Tri-Cities to form a partnership called the Tri-Cities Strategic Alliance. Each of our four regional organizations is intentionally collaborating together to work on regional scale projects. We've each selected one project and the COG, to align with our broadband action activities, has taken on the project of Internet for All to be able to work with our communities to ensure equitable, available, affordable internet access for all of our community members. Next slide. I mentioned our EPA Brownfield Coalition Assessment Grant, that funding we have had in place for almost three years. The funds have been nearly completely expended. We have one final planning project underway currently. So it's our intention to reapply for funds from the EPA this October to continue that program. As part of our bylaws update, we formed a Economic Development District Advisory Committee with the restructure of our Board of Directors to allow more involvement of the economic drivers in our region within the organization. So I have two quick questions for you all. A focus for us with the COG recently has been making sure that our jurisdictions understand that while we are known for being a transportation planning organization primarily and being involved in economic development, as a council, we can be used as a tool to help you achieve other goals within the region, helping any two or more jurisdictions partner together on multi-jurisdictional programs, for example. So my question for you is, what regional issue of mutual concern would you want to discuss with your fellow jurisdictions?
Okay, yeah, well, given five seconds of notice for this question, I'd be happy to bring something up that...
I'm not, something burning.
That may be, maybe a bit random and I think it is kind of multi-jurisdictional. We have a railroad track that goes around Richland and through Kennewick and so forth. And I've noticed that the string of cars has gotten a bit longer in the last few years, sometimes more than a mile long. And because of the condition of the track, I've been told, that necessitates the train goes very slow, which I understand for safety reasons. I've actually had some rail yard safety training myself. And but what concerns me is that for West Richland especially, that if there's an emergency vehicle that needs to get from point A to point B, we only have a couple of routes to take. And so if an emergency vehicle is traveling down Van Geesten with a victim in the back, if they have to wait for 12 minutes for that train to pass, which is about what it takes, do the math, they're in pretty sad shape. So I'm just wondering if there's an effort, potential effort, and I'm kind of speaking to all here, right? If there's a way that, that if, or maybe it already is coordinated so that when a long train is moving, that the emergency response vehicles are notified that this is happening so they can plan the routes appropriately. And I'm not sure if the same situation happens in Kennewick or not, but I haven't been told that there is coordination or that the train yard or operator does notify the municipalities of their schedule.
I also do not know the answer to that question, but I will make a note of that one for more information and noting the concerns.
It's kind of a random thing if it comes to BF COG, but you know, it's in the range.
You'll be surprised, the different items that happen to come to mind so far as I've talked to jurisdictions, everything from glass recycling, pooling, purchasing for parks and recreation equipment purchases, I mean, you name it. Anybody else have one that they'd like to discuss with their fellow jurisdictions if given the opportunity?
Well, I, actually, now that you mention it, Councilmember Smart, I recently also had a very big concern about emergency response and the railway because I had twice within the past month been caught behind railway traffic and I didn't know of any other way that they would be able to cross into West Richland from Richland or vice versa easily. So that, I like that, yes.
I have one other question for you. And that would be, if the COG could be utilized to help our local governments collaborate in a way that would help reduce duplication of efforts, save money, or launch a program or service that a jurisdiction could not justify doing on their own, is there something like that that's top of mind for you?
Ms. Holt, I'll put this notion out. And you talked about in your presentation, high-speed internet access. That is no longer an option. Households need it. It's a utility, just like electricity, sewer, water, and so forth. So one of the things that I have seen, the Association of Washington Cities, has really pushed this with the legislature to try to ensure that there's high-speed internet access across all our communities. And I would certainly request that BF COG continue their efforts in that regard because without it, there is inequity in the ability to access information, to get information, and it does leave part of our population that does not have access to that at a severe disadvantage. So I'll pass that along, please.
Thank you.
Else?
Something that I know that we've discussed at BF COG, and full disclosure, I'm the Vice Chair of BF COG right now, is I really like the discussion that we had had recently regarding how we can come up with priorities for the Tri-Cities specifically so that when we go to our federal or state legislators, we can say, not, here is this list of 50 things that we've all decided we want, but here, if we just have 10 seconds, this is the one thing we all want with one voice. And then if we've got more than that, like we've got 20 or 25 seconds, here's another thing that's next on the list so that we could all talk in one voice and have that working together. I think that that, I love the conversation and hope that it continues to go forward.
Since I sit as Vice Chair, no longer Chair, of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, if you want to talk recycling, that's where we talk about it. And the impracticality of shipping glass across the mountains. But, you know, sand is pretty cheap. But, you know, we recently had on a citizen survey the question of recycling for West Richland as to what people wanted to pay because recycling's not free. Matter of fact, it's pretty expensive. But, you know, there are some things that are, make sense to recycle. Unfortunately, lately, less things make sense. And things are backing out, but regionally, we will be trying to look for... The state in their ultimate wisdom is looking at green waste and composting. And we are looking at regional opportunities for composting. And so that's, that's something that would be, but with the current bug issues, where we're having, you can't move, you have the beetles coming in to certain areas of Franklin County, it's, you know, it's getting worse and worse. So, you know, rather than take on recycling, there are organizations that try and deal with it.
Well, I should clarify, that was a top-of-mind thought from one of, one of our jurisdictions, not necessarily something we're taking on, but...
But backyard composting is highly encouraged.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you all very much. We appreciate your support and being able to serve your community.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Holt, for taking the time to give that presentation. I only wish that every dollar I invested returned 80-plus dollars back, but... But thank you. Council, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Can I address something about the consent agenda just before you get going?
Please.
As council might recognize, one of these items, item 6C, involves Councilmember Bloom. So he, I assume, will agree to recuse himself on the vote, given that this is all on the consent agenda, just one vote. I think technically, we're not having a hearing today, so I don't know that he needs to step down, but certainly will not vote on the consent agenda. The other issue is we barely have a quorum and state law requires that a, an affirmative vote requires a yes vote of the majority of the full council. So the consent agenda would need to be passed by the remaining four council members unanimously, as, as well as four votes for anything else on the agenda tonight.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. So you will recuse yourself.
I will recuse myself.
Thank you. So tonight's consent agenda consists of approving the minutes of the regular meeting, April 16th, 2024, and workshop on April 9th, 2024. Ordinance 08-24, Amending West Richland Municipal Code, Section 12.04.030(c)(2)4 and 7, Regarding Frontage Improvements Required. Resolution 3424, Granting Roadway Frontage Improvement Waiver for Everett Street. Motion to Approve 2024 Pavement Preservation and Street Striping Project. Motion to Reject All Bids for the North Lake East Lake Roadway Repairs Project. Motion to Approve the Final Platte of Paradise Townhomes, File Number Platte 005-2024. Resolution 3524, Proclamation Request, Public Safety Recognition Week. Finally, Resolution 3624, Relating to Surplus Equipment, Body-Worn Cameras. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there anyone attending virtually that would like to comment on the consent agenda? If so, please raise your virtual hand. The city clerk will unmute you. And I kindly request you state your name and city of reference, city of residence for the record. I see no one virtually to use. Stephanie? No. All right. Seeing no one virtually, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any negative votes? And one abstention. Councilmember Bloom. Motion carries. This is the first period for citizen public comment. We have our first opportunity tonight to comment on items not on the agenda. If you wish to provide comments, I kindly request that you come to the podium, state your name and address. You'll have three minutes to provide your comments. Please remember the council cannot respond to questions you might pose to us during the comment period and that this timeframe is for comments not related to items on the agenda. We'll ask for comments about items on the agenda later on in the meeting. Is there anyone attending in person that would like to make comment? Please.
Hello, my name is Jean Peterson and I'm a land owner, land owner just off the heights at Red, near Red Mountain. And I wanted to speak on... And I wanted to speak on my opposition to potentially citing a new cannabis shop in West Richland. I feel that this is a quality of life issue, a property value issue, and a potential crime issue. Our police are busy enough, and I strongly urge you, please do not cite any more cannabis shops. We have one here that's locally available if people need it, and it doesn't belong in our community. Thank you.
Anyone else? Is there anyone attending virtually that would like to make comment? If so, please raise your virtual hand. City clerk will unmute you, and you'll have three minutes to provide your comments. And I ask also that you provide your name and address for the record. And you can press star nine to raise your hand if you're attending via telephone. Stephanie, I do not see anyone. Do you?
I do not.
Moving on, ordinances, resolution, motions, and public hearings. Our first item is ordinance 09-24 budget amendment. Item 8A is an ordinance amending the 2023-2024 biannual budget. Finance Director Erin Gwynn will present the staff report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Protem Brink. Good evening, council, audience. This evening, I'm presenting the 10th budget amendment of the 2324 biannual budget. This budget amendment contains four items and three separate funds. The first two items are in the general fund. Item number one is regarding a cell tower lease renewal. The city has property leased to Cell Tower Company, and the lease is coming to an end, but the cell company is looking to extend the lease. The city requires an appraisal to be completed at the cost of the cell tower company to get a fair market lease price for the renewal. This amendment recognizes the revenue and appropriates the expenditure in the amount of $5,500 for the appraisal costs. The second general fund item is to recognize $12,800 in grant revenue from Washington City's Insurance Authority, or WCIA, as part of their risk reduction grant program. This amendment will increase the appropriations for the same amount to purchase a sidewalk sidewalk grinder. The next item is in 104 Park Impact Fund. On April 16th of this year, council authorized the mayor to execute a Transportation Improvement Board, or TIB Complete Streets Grant Agreement, for the Candy Mountain Pathway Kennedy Road Crossing Project. This amendment recognizes an increase in revenues in the amount of $131,739 and appropriates an additional $40,000 for the project, bringing the total project cost to $240,000. The anticipated ending fund balance of the 104 fund is expected to increase in the amount of $91,739. This is the difference between the grant revenue and the increased project cost. The final item in this amendment is for another TIB grant project, which is for a school zone pedestrian improvement project in the 355 Transportation Improvement Program Fund. This amendment recognizes an additional $250,508 in grant revenue and $27,104 as contribution revenue from the Richland School District for this project. It also appropriates the total project cost in the amount of $304,716. The project will utilize $27,104 from the ending fund balance to round it out. Staff recommends passing the attached ordinance. This amendment authorizes an increase in the 2324 appropriations in the amount of $363,016 and an increase in total resources in the amount of $427,651, bringing the revised budget to a total of $145,986,181.
Thank you, Ms. Gwynn. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to comment on this item? I see no one in person stepping up to the podium. Is there anyone virtually that would like to comment on this item? And if you're attending virtually, once again, please raise star nine if you're doing it via telephone. I see no one virtually. Do you concur?
I do not see anyone either. No.
Council, do I have a motion for this ordinance?
I move to pass ordinance 09-24, amending the City of West Richland 2023-2024 Biannual Budget.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Council, any questions that were not previously addressed in the staff report by Ms. Gwynn? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We're on to item number nine, unfinished business. We have some unfinished business this evening. One is the presentation of the proclamation that was passed a little bit earlier in this meeting as part of the consent agenda. So the proclamation, in recognizing May 5 through May 11 as Public Service Recognition Week, reads as follows. Whereas Public Service Recognition Week, celebrated in May since 1985, is a time to honor those individuals who serve America as federal, state, and local government employees. And whereas, the employees of the City of West Richland serve the public in many invaluable ways, helping to make life better and striving to support and improve our community. And whereas, the dedication and hard work of government employees who conduct the public's business often goes unrecognized, despite the essential services they perform. And now therefore, I, Fred Brink, on behalf of Mayor Brent Gary, Mayor of the City of West Richland, do hereby proclaim May 5 through May 11 as Public Service Recognition Week and encourage citizens to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and city. And do we have a representative here that's going to receive the proclamation? We have it right up here. Ms. Stewart, correct? Yes, pleasure. Oh, please stand at the podium.
I want to thank the City of Richland for the proclamation. And we cordially invite everyone and their families to the event, which is this Thursday at the Gisee Carousel Dreams at the Southridge Sports Complex. There'll be hot dogs and hamburgers and carousel rides. So it's, we've been putting the event on there for about five years now. And throughout the tri cities, we've we've had this event plus 15-plus years or so. We we appreciate your proclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Second item under unfinished business is advisory vote update, which will be provided by our city attorney, Ms. Jessica Foltz.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Good evening, council. I apologize that we added this late to the agenda. We've been, it's been a work in progress for the last few days. I'm gonna just pass down copies. So we sent the resolution that council approved to the elections office. They run it through the prosecutor's office, the civil attorneys in the prosecutor's office. And they sent it back with some significant changes based on their belief that a certain statute applied and that it had to be, had to mirror some other types of initiatives that are not an advisory vote. Advisory votes in this context are not specifically allowed by statute. But there is an Attorney General opinion from, I think, the 70s that gives us or recognizes that the cities have the authority to do it. So we went back and forth a little bit. And finally, we were able to pull Benton City's advisory vote that they had used, they had on the ballot a couple of years ago. And we were able to come up with what you have in front of you, which is very close to what we originally had in our resolution. So I just wanted to update council, this language has been approved. The language for the explanatory statement, really, it was just kind of grammatical changes. There was nothing substantive in that respect. But the actual ballot language, we did change just a little bit to more closely mirror what Benton City used, which they felt was appropriate. So with that, I just wanted to update council and give anybody the chance to make a comment about it if they wanted. I did get clarification just this afternoon that they're gonna move forward with contacting the pro and con committees and try to get rolling on that portion of this process. So with that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Councilmember Bloom.
So does this mean we need to amend our resolution?
No, our resolution has language in it that says that the city attorney may make any amendments that are minor, necessary. And part of the reason we put this on the agenda yesterday was, you know, if if the county was gonna stick to their guns about their initial changes, we did not believe, I did not believe that those were minor. And so we wanted to be able to bring it back in front of council and find out how you wanted to proceed. But in the end, we all got on the same page. And I think you'll see from looking at those that they are minor. So we do not believe the resolution needs to be amended.
Other questions from council? Councilmember Moran.
Thank you. So the disagreement between the language between the county and us, is that something now that's been finalized? Or are we still waiting to hear back after we give this to them?
We got, it was, the person I was directly talking to was an attorney that works for the county. And she's kind of the person who tells the elections person if it's good. So I got confirmation from both of them this afternoon that this, what you have in front of you is acceptable for them, and they're moving forward.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Smart.
Yeah, so can can we just restate when when this is planned to go, which ballot this will go on?
This is going on the August, is it August 6th? August 6th ballot.
Thank you. And I think, Counselor Foltz, just for the benefit of our audience, for those that are attending in person tonight, I'll I'll read this just so you can hear it. There's no issue with that. Just so everyone's aware of it going in, of course, it's available as part of our public record. But the, it's Proposition 1, City of West Richland Advisory Vote Regarding Cannabis Retail Sales, Non-Binding. The question is, please advise the city council of your preference for the city to either allow or not allow cannabis retail sales within the City of West Richland. Select one of the following: allow, do not allow. And then there's some explanatory information, four paragraphs that I'll read. On the October 6, 2024 ballot, registered voters living in the City of West Richland will be asked their opinion on a proposal to allow cannabis retail sales within the city.
August.
August. Sorry, August. Excuse that mistake. Currently, the retail sale of cannabis is prohibited in the city. In November of 2022, the city received an application to allow cannabis retail sales within the city. After a review by staff and the Planning Commission, a text amendment was presented to the city council in November of 2023 that will allow cannabis retail sales in light industrial zoning districts within the city. Due to the level of public comment received from city residents on the issue, city council passed a resolution placing the issue on the ballot for an advisory vote. The State of Washington currently taxes cannabis through a single excise tax of 37% at the time of retail sale, in addition to regular state and local sales tax. The revenue from the 30% excise tax would be shared with the city, with some of the revenues distributed on a per capita population basis, and the rest distributed on an actual cannabis retail sales basis. State law does not allow for a direct vote on the issue, but the city council wants your opinion. The advisory vote will be one consideration used by the city council in making their final decision on whether to pass legislation, regulations, allowing cannabis retail sales within the city. That is the scope of the text. Okay. Moving on, new business, we have none. And so now we get to the second citizen public comment period. And I would ask those that wish to come to the podium to state your name, address for the record, please, and kindly limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone that would care to make public comment?
Dan Ritchie, 508 Austin Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. I wholeheartedly support what Ms. Peterson brought up just a little bit ago in her comments. And I also have some, I would hope, comparable comments to to provide you with. Marijuana is the number one gateway drug. Now, before you scoff at that and you say, well, here we go again, Dan doesn't know what he's talking about. Let me just tell you that it's according to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention. In their Youth Risk Behavioral Survey, the number one predictor that teens have abused opioids in the past 30 days is whether they have ever used marijuana in their lifetimes. It's an even better indicator than previous 30-day alcohol use. In other words, using marijuana leads to teen opioid use more than any other drug. Because of this, we see that increased marijuana use contributes to the current opioid crisis, which we all know is running at a fever pitch across our country. Now, Mr. Weaver is going to tell you that kids are gonna do it anyway. He's the one that has the license here, and he's gonna come into town. I really don't care for that attitude, but there you are. In 2010, the CDC says there were 20,000 overdose overdose deaths related to opioids. In 2021, that number had increased to 80,000 overdose deaths involving opioids. Marijuana, being the gateway drug that it is, doesn't mean that if you use it, you'll definitely use hard drugs as well. But people who are using harder drugs most likely started with marijuana. But that's a gate, that's what gateway means. If you went to a party and had never used any substance before, and a friend suggested you shoot up with heroin, would you? Probably not. But if you had been using marijuana and your tolerance has built up so much that you can't get the same high as before, you are more likely to move on to a harder substance. So to say, as we've heard, that it's not a gateway drug, I challenge that. And that is something that I'm really loathe to turn loose in our community. Thank you.
Any other citizens care to make comment? Sir?
My name is Steve Smat, 1788 Ironwood Avenue. I thank you for the opportunity to come up here. Except I don't have anything written down, no prepared statement. But I speak, I'm just speaking from my heart and from my experience. I'm upset. So that's the term that I use because I have respect for everybody that's in this room, but it goes a lot deeper than that. So I'm I'm upset because I'm standing up here addressing this this issue on recreational marijuana retail sales. I'm upset that they use the term recreational. Recreational marijuana is, it's a misnomer. It's a huge misnomer. It's like taking a half a bottle of gin and saying, I'm gonna drink this for recreational purposes. No, you're gonna drink it to get drunk, and it's gonna have a bad effect on you, and it's gonna have a bad effect on your, anybody that you're dealing with at that time, if this is your practice. So I'm upset that this wasn't squashed at the very get-go. I speak from experience. I'm probably definitely older than any of you. In that experience, I knew drug users, I knew drug abusers, and I knew drug dealers. Now, you can close your eyes or open your eyes, but imagine what a drug dealer looks like. Whether they're from the 70s, 80s, 90s, or they're standing on the other side of the border. Imagine what they look like. Now shave them, cut their hair, put a suit on them, put a tie on them, put a- put a briefcase in their hand. Are they any different? They're not one bit different. I grew up in that culture, and I saw what it did to people. It hurt people's lives, it destroyed people's lives. And those drug dealers cared about one thing and one thing only. They cared about what they got out of it. That hasn't changed one iota. And I'm, I'm upset that this is, we moved here about three years ago. Beautiful town, nice town, nice people. Been to a couple of the city council meetings. This is, this is a great opportunity. You provide a great opportunity for people to speak up, and, and I know that you listen. So take that, that whole drug dealer situation and put it on your street corners. Put a sign on it, put an open sign on it. People can come in and do the things that they did in the seventies and eighties. And you know the only difference there is right now? Is in the seventies and eighties and nineties, those people, when they got caught, went to jail. They don't go to jail anymore. They don't care about your children. They don't care about the kids that go to our libraries, our churches, or our schools. They're there for what they can get out of it, just like they were thirty, forty, fifty years ago. So yeah, I'm upset, and that's a light term, and I use it with respect. And I hope you'll, you'll really search your hearts before you carry this another step further. One other thing, so I, I know two members, and I want to be fair to everybody.
I have, I have to ask you to make a quick search.
Okay, one, one second. I know two members on this committee that are adamantly opposed to, quote, recreational drugstores, drug centers opening up in West Richland. I don't know, I don't want to be fair. I don't know anybody else on this council that stands with them and stands with those that are opposed to it. Would you be willing to raise your hand if you're against recreational drugs, drug centers in West Richland?
I have to ask you, please, it's been more than three minutes.
I'll turn around, walk away right now. Is anybody willing to raise their hand?
It's also not a point of discussion.
Okay, thank you.
And back and forth conversation, but thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would care to make public comment? Seeing none, is there anyone attending virtually that would like to make public comment? Kindly ask you to raise your virtual hand or star nine if you're attending via telephone. And I do not see anyone. Do you concur, Stephanie?
I do.
Right. Seeing no one, we'll move on to staff and council reports. I'll turn to staff first. Are there any staff members that would care to make a report to council? Mr. Slade.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just give an update to council. South Thirty-eighth has been repaired, back open. I left for a week on vacation, and they got it done, so it's all open to traffic. So they made quick work of that. Tonight, we rejected, it says all bids for North Lake, East Lake repairs. We only received one bid, and it was more than, almost double. So there's something going on there, so we'll reject that bid. We'll go back and find out the reasons why, and we'll put that back out to bid. So not giving up on that project, but not, not paying seventy percent more than an engineer's estimate for that, so that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Slade. Chief Greg O.
Thanks, Mayor Protem. Good evening, council. After the tragedy events of April twenty-second, I just want to publicly announce again or thank all the partnering agencies in law enforcement that came in. I want you guys to know that after we tallied all the names of the officers and everybody's support elements, detectives, federally, state, you know, and local, it was almost two hundred that showed up for that night. I can't say much more than I thank the team. It was amazing what West Richland Police Department, when they responded. I, I can assure the public that I'm also getting them help, anybody that needs it. If they need to talk to anybody, that's gonna continue. This isn't just a one-time deal. I'm gonna make sure it keeps going for them. But I can't say, I can't say more than that. I mean, it's just, it was amazing to me how well they did and how everybody came together. I went down, and I want to thank the Oregon State Police and Lane County, too. I went down and saw them the following week and shook their hands. And they were pretty amazing people, and I thanked them also, but, and thanked them on behalf of the West Richland community, so. On a different note, it's a positive thing. Sergeant Clinton Armitage has decided to retire. He worked for Richland before us, and then he came in, became a sergeant with us, and, and he's, he's planning on retiring at the end of June. I say it's a good thing because I love seeing law enforcement officers get to the end of their career and be able to hang up the hats and, you know, spend the rest of their life probably in retirement. But anyway, so I just want to let you also know about that tonight.
Thank you, chief. Council comments. Councilmember Bloom.
Uh, yes, just to let you know that, just a reminder, the bus route one-ten will eventually be eliminated in West Richland. That doesn't mean you don't have access to transit. It just means you're gonna have to learn how to use the Via app and get the connect to come get you. We are, what's on the agenda for this coming Thursday is Proposition Twenty-one seventeen. It will be on the ballot in, I believe, November, which is the repeal of the carbon offset tax. And that's the tax that you're seeing why our gas prices are fifty cents more per gallon than anywhere else. Also, if you have natural gas, you're paying the price probably a little bit. Well, I think the REA has sort of protected us from it to some extent because we don't have carbon-based electricity. But with that, we may be forced to reduce Route ten, which is, comes into it, to every hour service rather than the current every half-hour service. But we'll be discussing that this Thursday. The, and we'll be doing, looking at some minor changes with that carbon offset. Right now, we are not, one of the carbon offset benefits was the kids ride free. I do not believe that will change, and even if we lose the carbon offset tax, which is, I mean, it's, the, the money that we're talking about, we get for the carbon offset tax compared to what you put in, because the carbon offset tax is miniscule. You talk about return on investment. It's very negative for you guys. But so we will, we'll be able to, to make, do what we can, but things are, will be changing. If you see one-ten disappear, the bus stops come down, that just means we have to educate people. There's a ride out there. It's a connect ride. It's a small van. There's an app you put on the phone. It's sort of like an Uber. You just have to wait fifteen minutes. You might have to walk a block or two.
Thank you, Councilmember Bloom. Councilmember Moran.
Thank you very much. First, I would like to thank Michelle Holt for coming here and representing BF Cog. I always, as always, I appreciate the direction you're bringing BF Cog. I would also like to thank those that gave public comment today. I appreciate, we appreciate your words. We appreciate being able to hear what you're saying. So thank you very much for coming up here and speaking to us. I would also like to thank our police and the responding agencies, as well as our police, for the tragedy that happened, for everything that was done. I can't imagine how difficult that was for those involved. Just hearing about it, I can't think about it. And also for our community coming together during this tragedy. It's, I guess, that silver lining, I suppose. So I would like to thank for all of that. And now, I guess, on to something completely different. I would like to mention something that I've heard and that I think Councilmember Bloom was referring to as well regarding the Japanese Beatles. I don't know if we've received much information from the master gardeners, but the Washington State University Extension Master Gardener Program Coordinator sent me an email, and I didn't know if it would be better for, perhaps, her to speak with the staff, but they are thinking that it might be a good idea for the city if we don't already have awareness much about what's going on, that we should really know what's going on because it could get bad very quickly. We really don't want to have a quarantine of agriculture coming out of our area, our region. But I don't have all the details, and I can forward that information to you all. But wanted to make sure that we were aware about this, that it is something people should be looking at and being concerned about. Not like hair-on-fire, arms-flying, Kermit-style, but concerned. And that, yeah, that's all I got. So thank you.
Councilmember Farrow.
Thank you. I just had a, or Councilmember Bloom. You know, there's a rule in banking that you don't leave a town unbanked. I'm assuming Brian Frank and Trans understands how the growth of West Richland is not gonna maintain the same income levels. How do they justify removing the only public transit within the city limits? Well, outside of pulling up an app and requesting a bus or a van to come pick me up, a regular route?
The, the ten, which comes up Van Gies and to the, and, and services, services, the Brotherhood, will continue to work. And the movement.
Yeah, that's not on their map here.
Oh, well, it should be.
That was my only question. Just was concerned about public transit in a, an area that's growing as rapidly as we are.
Right.
It's not on their map.
But the, the one-ten really has not been that productive. I mean, that's number of boardings per day in the hundred, maybe sometimes hits a hundred.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smart. Yes, Mayor Protem Brink, thank you. Yeah, I had very similar comments to Councilmember Moran. Thank you for the presentation, and also to the members of the audience that spoke. We, we hear you. Can't communicate with you while we're up here at the, when you're at the podium. But I certainly agree with the sentiment that was expressed tonight. And so I'm one of those council members that has made my voice very clear on my stand on bringing, you know, a psychoactive drug into West Richland that I have also personally seen. You might not be the oldest person in the, in the room. I think I'm competing with you, but who knows? But I will say that I've also witnessed people's lives destroyed, absolutely destroyed, just with marijuana. They didn't even have to go onto the hard drugs. So it does have an impact. It, if, and I've said before to council and the community, show me the benefit. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm unbiased to at least that extent, but I have yet to hear anybody tell me how there is a return on investment, how there's any benefit. And, and by the way, the sixty-seven thousand dollars in tax just does not cut it. You could triple that, you could quadruple that, you could multiply it by ten. It still pales in comparison to the cost. So I would encourage you to, please, continue your comments. Educate us with things like Mr. Ritchie gave tonight. I, I found that enlightening. Those were numbers I had not heard before. And I think when you speak before council, you help educate not only council members, but also the community. And I think that's important. And segueing there, I would say that, you know, we had a public, or city survey again, and we got almost twice the respondents that we did the first time. But it's still a small fraction of the registered voters in this community. And that was just a survey, you know? And the problem is, we get similar results with our voting turnout. We have a lot of registered voters and only a small fraction turn out. So I think that there's a, a need to educate the public to vote, just in general. And I, I'm confident that if that vote were taken seriously by our citizens, that this issue would, would go away real fast, and because I'm pretty sure that's the sentiment of our community, but. Then that's just from personal experience. There's no hard scientific numbers there. But I, I think that voting is important, and it's not just for this issue, but for every issue. And I really see a lack of, of civics education in our community. And I think people are, are sadly sitting in their living rooms, thinking there's nothing they can do, and that their vote doesn't count, and that there, nothing could be further from the truth. We've been duped by, I don't know who, our education system, our media. I don't know how we've gotten to this point in America in general, but voting is important. So if you want to have a big impact, go take your message and multiply it to your neighbors and get a covenant with them that they'll actually make the effort. I mean, we have mail-in voting, for goodness sakes. You don't even have to get out of your armchair. So, so let's do that, and let's make sure that we get a good representation of West Richland at this August sixth ballot. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Councilmember Smart. And speaking of elections, it is Candidate Declaration Week for those that wish to run for office. I think a lot of federal offices that are open, anyone wants to give it a shot. But also, other offices are open throughout the state as well, but it is Candidate filing week. Last thing I'll mention is just, I will be attending part of the Energy Communities Alliance meetings that take place tomorrow and Thursday, along with Mayor Gary. I'm also gonna fit in a retro board meeting. Retro is the, the nickname for AWC's Retroactive Worker Compensation Program, industrial insurance essentially, which our city is a subscriber to. So I sit on the board for that as well, so that's all I have. If there's nothing else, I will adjourn tonight's meeting at seven oh six P M. Thank you all for coming.